Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting has been webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individuals, individual persons in the course of this meeting and the statements of those individuals are not of counsel. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Counsel accepts no liability for the statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the events of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency must appoint during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Counsel acknowledges the One Royal Peoples as the traditional custodians of this land that we're meeting on today. We pay our respect to elders past, present and future and I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awapukal people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sessnock Loke government area. Will I have the prayer which will be led by Pastor Amanda Francis? Pastor Amanda? All stand for the prayer, please.
Thanks for having me here today. Since I was here before, we've just wanted to let you know that we've started our food bank with the greener workers' club and just been supported by them really well and East Sessnock Bowling Club to help renovate a shed. So that's really exciting. It's going well and we've started our youth group that's going really well as well as family fun days and yeah, the community is just a really caring community. It's really good to be part of it. So yeah, let's pray. Well, we just thank you for each one of us that's here today. Well, thank you for the hard work that's put in to running a council or by many people. From each of the councillors, Lord, each of the members of staff within the council, Lord, we just thank you for each of them. We know that at times they're doing many hours, Lord, of which they're not paid. I just thank you for that. Most gracious God, we pray for the council of the city of Sessnock, its members and officers. Direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city. So that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Amanda. And that food care out there is fantastic, I have to mention. We have no apologies tonight. Tonight, no leave of absence. We do have two councillors wishing to join via audio visual link. So we have both councillor Harrington and councillor Madden. Could I have someone to move? Councillor Hill, second councillor Mason, all in favour? It's unanimous. Councillor Madden, councillor Harrington, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mayor Watten.
Great. Okay. Disclosures of interest, sorry, confirmation of previous minutes. Could I have someone to move? Councillor Lee, seconded councillor Pascoe, all in favour? It's unanimous. Disclosures, sorry, disclosures of interest. Councillor Jurd?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to declare a non-procuratory interest on WI nineteen slash twenty twenty five, the draft waste management policy. Family work there but will not have, I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict has not in, will not influence me in carrying out my public duty because family work there but have nothing to do with their role. This would have nothing to do with their role, sorry.
Thank you councillor Jurd. Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I would like to declare a conflict of interest for PE twenty five slash twenty twenty five, DA eight slash twenty twenty four slash five three O slash one, the proposing the erection of a dwelling and ancillary pool, swimming pool. I, Tracy Harrington, declare the following interest: non-procurnary, less than significant conflict for the reason that I have a relative that owns a property in close proximity to the building envelope of the proposed development. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict does not influence me in carrying out my public duties because I am committed to acting in the best interest of the community and make my decisions in accordance with council's policies and statutory obligations.
Thank you councillor Harrington. Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. My conflict of interest disclosure is in report number PE twenty four twenty twenty five. The report title is DA eight twenty twenty four slash five three three slash one Dwelling and Tourist Accommodation Function Centre. It's a non-procurnary interest, less than significant conflict. I've chosen to disclose this because I believe one of the applicants may own a business that is a member of the Business Chamber, of which I'm a president of. I wish to choose, sorry, I choose to remain in the chamber and participate as this won't affect my ability to make judgment relating to the DA.
Okay, thank you councillor Pascoe. Any other conflicts, disclosures? No petitions? And we have two speakers tonight regarding PE twenty four slash twenty twenty five, one for and one against. And after the speakers, we will then deal with that matter. If I could ask first for against? Mr David Lansbury? Yep, thank you, Mr Lansbury. Just come on up to the lectern up here and I'll turn your microphone on. So, Mr Lansbury, we, three minutes. Maybe an extension, we will need to vote that through.
You ready? Yeah. Mayor, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I stand before you as a boundary neighbour to the proposed development in Pecoben and I want to make it clear I'm not against tourism. Tourism, tourism is vital to this district, but this proposal is not rural tourist accommodation. It's a major integrated resort in the wrong place. The first issue is scale. Council's own planning controls allow for fifty nine accommodation rooms and the draft vineyard's DCP allows for just forty accommodation rooms on a site of this size. What is proposed is one hundred and eighteen rooms, two to three times what the rules envisage. Council staff have chosen to interpret the rules differently, but each pod is a self-contained and bookable separate entity. By any fair reading, that makes it one hundred and eighteen units. If this interpretation stands, every large rural block in the ER vineyards will be open to the same kind of overdevelopment. That will undermine years of planning work and the vision that you have set for this district. Second, this development sits landlocked in the middle of one hundred acre farming and vineyard lots. These lands are actively producing wine and supporting agriculture. Dropping a resort of this scale into the middle of working farms invites constant conflict. Conflict over noise, over lighting, spraying and over basic farming operations. Once tourists move in next door, it is the farmers who will be forced to change, not the other way around. This directly undermines the RU four zoning, which is meant to protect rural and agricultural uses. Third and most importantly, there are serious flood and safety risks. There's only one road in and out across Pecoben Creek. In a one in one hundred year flood, which is the proper planning benchmark, that access is cut off. The proposal relies on a shelter-in-place strategy effectively locking hundreds of tourists on site until the waters recede. These are visitors unfamiliar with local conditions. Some will try to leave, creating risk to life and a burden on emergency services. The New South Wales Flood Manual makes it clear that shelter-in-place must address food, water, power, sewer and medical needs. None of these issues have been resolved here. And that brings me to another critical point. The assessment report itself acknowledges that many key issues remain unresolved. Flood evacuation, sewage management, noise, even the impact on local roads. All have been left to be dealt with later through conditions of consent. These are not minor matters. They go to the very heart of whether the development is safe, suitable and compatible with its surroundings. They must be addressed upfront, not after approval. Taken together, this proposal fails on every essential test. It's too big for the site. It's incompatible with surrounding agriculture. It is unsafe in a flood and it has too many unresolved issues. It doesn't meet your current LEP and DCP requirements and it represents exactly the kind of development that your own draft vineyard strategy is designed to prevent. This decision will set the tone for the future of the Vineyards District. Will we protect its character, its agricultural base and its safety? Or will we open the door to inappropriate resorts scattered across farmland?
Mr Lansbury, I've just run out of time. Extension of time councillor Lee, seconded councillor Hawkins, an extra minute there for you.
Thank you very much. I ask you to uphold the plan-
Sorry, my apology. We'll have to vote that through.
Oh, sorry.
I just first and second wanted to get straight into it. All in favour? Okay, it's unanimous. Apologies.
Okay, thanks. I ask you to uphold the planning vision you've worked so hard to create and refuse this application. The last little bit I would like to show you, just a couple of images. You've probably seen this. I emailed it actually, but I want to show it again. This is a representation of the hundred and eighteen units that are being put into this development. This blue zone is under your current DCP plan, what is allowable, which is fifty nine units. This is what you're striving to achieve potentially with the DCP strategy that you've got in play at the moment lodged in March twenty five. The scale of this from here to here, and now look at what, look at what we're doing to this particular area. Further than this, I just want to bring up something on this existing vineyard. On the existing vineyard, it's been suggested that vegetation buffers can be used. They can't be used. The vegetation buffers will be competing for the nutrients with the soil and for the water with the soil. They will also bring more birds which will attack the vines. So these are big issues.
That's the minute gone. Another extension? Yep, so councillor Jurd, second councillor Pascoe, we've voted on that, all in favour? Tom Mouski, sorry, all in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous. Is that a go?
Okay, thank you. Last chart. This is the site, the proposed development site with a single road of access coming in. You can see the flood zone here, the one in one hundred flood zone. You can also see on the emergency route, we've got a one in one hundred flood zone sitting down here as well. There is no way out of this in this, in this particular case. Now further, this is running through Brokenwood wines and there is a biodiversity, biosecurity, sorry, issue in people just traipsing through here. They could be spraying, they could be bringing in bacteria, pathogens or whatever on their shoes. So it's actually a very important thing that there's not suitable access in this landlocked position. So look, once again, I urge you all to refuse this application. It doesn't make sense. It's the right, right resort in the wrong location. The DCP strategy has actually got nodes of areas that these sort of resorts can go in. Dropping this in the middle of hundred acre farming and agricultural lots does not make sense. So please vote against.
Thank you, Mr Lansbury. We'd have some questions. Mr Lansbury, would you be happy to answer some questions from the councillors?
Yeah, sure.
Questions councillor Jurd?
Thank you for your, that was quite good. It's much better than actually like just reading the email when you can actually listen to someone explain it.
Yeah.
I do have a question. In the paperwork, I believe that they were saying that one of the neighbours, because you said you're an existing neighbour to this.
I'm on a boundary, yeah.
Yes, would your vines be affected?
With my what, sorry? I haven't got vines on mine. I've got cattle on mine at this stage. Yeah.
So would they be affected?
I have an old vineyard, sorry, on that side which actually was on that boundary. If I wanted to reinvigorate, there would be an issue there, yes.
Okay, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I just had a question. You made a, made reference to the draft DCP which council adopted back in March this year to put on public exhibition. And I'm just unsure about the level of information that's flowed back to yourself as a submission to the DA process or compared to what councillors have received to the questions we've put in. But councillors have received, as well as what was in the report for the council, for the DA itself, the information from our planning staff noting that the initial pre-DA meeting for this application occurred in February of twenty twenty four last year and that the application has been considered since early twenty twenty four.
Sorry councillor Hill, is it a question that you're acting towards?
Yeah, sorry, I should just say, were you as a, as a person who submitted questions or a submission, I guess, against this report made aware of the fact that this development application would be assessed under the planning DCPs as they were in place at the time?
Absolutely. So there's two things here. The first part is that it will be assessed against that and that is the blue encased area that I showed you, which is half the size, half the size of the proposed site of the hundred and eighteen units. However, I think the DCP strategy going forward, the one from March twenty five, needs to be considered because that's the forward direction that the council is moving. And so therefore it does not make sense not to take those sort of things into account in terms of what we're actually doing to the Hunter Valley. The Hunter Valley is a very important region and we need to protect it and we can't let that go. So we need to be looking forward as well. But either way, it fails on both.
No further questions, Mr Lansbury. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Now we'll be hearing for this development, Mr Justin Hamilton. And Mr Hamilton, you have three minutes from the time you start.
Thank you very much, Mayor Watten. Councillors, thank you for inviting me back into the chamber. I'd just like to speak on behalf of this proposal and development. Our client, Mr Ken Conway, is the CEO. He's the CEO of the Community Federation of Community Sport and Rec Clubs. That's the proponent for this development. They run three other retreat resorts all around New South Wales. They particularly are a proven track record. They have over one point seven five million members in New South Wales. These are people that fill a valuable gap for the Pecoben tourism market, which is midweek, midweek gap. What we've been asked to produce and what we believe we've produced here is a very ecologically sensitive development. It's a single-storey development across the contours. So it's, it leaves the ridge as sacred. It produces its own water in a very dry arid environment. It controls its own sewer. This is going to be a world-class development. It's targeting dark sky and midweek tourism, as I said. It has an incredible strong connection to country peace and we've worked very closely on that. It's a, we have, well before the DA was submitted, it's been going for over two years, our, our careful consideration of the site and the neighbours, there's been quite an extensive amount of consultation, which we're quite proud of. And, and it's, it's a development that really set out from the beginning to understand and appreciate that it was going to be complex. It was going to be difficult. It was going to need to be incredibly environmentally sensitive and we're incredibly proud that we've delivered something exceptional here. And we trust that, and we thank the council and their specialist team for considering everything and, you know, from traffic right through to ecology on this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. Questions for Mr Hamilton? Councillor Lee?
Thank you. You've mentioned that quite a number of times about the sensitivities around the ecology and the biodiversity of the area. Can you explain in a little more detail what's been considered and what's been done in that space?
Sure, there's, the creek that runs through there is, is really in a poor state. It's, it's been eroded through cattle grazing for the last couple of centuries, really. It's not been used for viticulture purposes, the land. We're going to be providing a forty metre wide ecological revegetation of that space, which really will keep the banks from eroding further, will purify the water and actually work on heat island effect, try to get more shade into the place, really provide places for some local habitat to come back. We, we have looked at plant species on the backside of the site. We, we have spoken with Brokenwood and others. We're very conscious. We don't want to be impeding on the water catchment of the current vineyards that are behind us. We don't want to cast shadows from trees. So we've worked closely trying to look at different ways of reducing the types of trees, the types of flowering plants, the types of vegetation we're going to put there. That's a couple of the ways. Most of it's about open swale drainage as well. So most developments like this would be pits and sumps and pipes. All of this is going to be open swale. So we get native grasses and meadows rather than lawn. I could go on for hours, actually.
Thank you.
Councillor Jurd?
Oh, hi, thank you. Do you have a quick question? Because you said about the retention rate. What did you say again about filling midweek?
Yeah, so, so the federation has another venue over at Fingle. And so a lot of their coastal venues get people during the weekends when they want to come up and use the beach and so forth. But as part of a package to go weekends at the coast and weekdays in the, in the vines, in the vineyard when it's a bit quieter is very, very attractable, attractive to the, to the federation. So that's a big part of their business case, actually, providing jobs midweek too.
But the reason why I asked the question is, I've been in contact with a lot of the communities in Pecoben with a lot of the businesses and they are saying that in the midweek, it only seems to be a thirty percent booking rate.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's the, that's the hole in the market at the moment. And that's what's really attractive to the federation and its group because it's communities, sporting clubs. There's a lot of people at an age that are very willing to come midweek, come up here. I think the big thing they want these days is electric parking and that's what we're giving them.
What makes, what would make them want to stay with you guys rather than what's already existing?
Well, they get a subsidised rate for accommodation because they're part of a club. If anyone is part of this club network, then they get a discount on their, on their stay, which makes it affordable for people to actually holiday in New South Wales.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Hingle, no, no questions? Okay, any further questions? I want to line. Okay, thank you very much, Mr Hamilton.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll now consider this, this matter. So PE twenty four slash twenty twenty five. So I open that. It's move debate. Councillor Jurd?
Sorry, you were really quick there tonight, Mayor. Okay, okay, so I'm sure all councillors here tonight got sent the same objections like I did. Then I'd like to know councillors-
Sorry, we need just a first and a second.
Oh, what are we doing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Am I reading that now? Because I've put my mic. Okay. I can still first it. I don't care. That's fine.
So are you trying to read off the screen there?
Okay, well, I can't because that thing's there. Fancy. Yeah, okay, develop. Alrighty, what do I do next? Because I've never done this one. Read all that. Okay, this is my first time. Sorry, everyone. Development application number eight slash-
Councillor, just, you don't have to read the whole thing either, just to make it easy. You can just move it as, as written. Yeah, with recommendation.
Remove it as a recommendation, okay.
Yep. So you'd like to move the recommendation? Yep.
No, I don't. Sorry. I don't want to remove that recommendation. Sorry, take me off it.
Okay. Do you have an alternate you'd like to move?
No, I want to vote against that.
Okay, so we'll need to open space. So you've, you've opened debate. You've been the first speaker. Okay, okay councillor Hill?
Resolution as written.
Okay.
Yeah.
So move recommendation. Has someone a second? Councillor Pascoe? Yes, councillor Pascoe?
Happy to reserve my right to allow councillor Jurd to speak.
Okay. Okay councillor Jurd, speaking?
I just want to apologize, everyone. I just was jumping in there. Okay, so I'm sure all councillors here tonight got sent the same objections like I did, that I'd like to know council's plan on how that would go if this passed tonight. What sort of controls would be in place and how they would manage? Council just spent, was it a year to put together the draft vineyard place strategy and the draft DCP vineyard district chapter? That's been out on expo and there've been, have been multiple meetings and a lot of back and forth to get that strategy to where it is today with a lot of residents and businesses in Pecoben. This draft DCP was prepared to align with the strategic obligations under the Hunter Regional Plan twenty twenty four, was it not? Which led me into my first question, that DCP doesn't recommend this type of development in this area due to the size. Hundred and eighteen self-contained rooms with individual pods joined by a small linking structure that could accommodate two hundred and thirty six people plus a hundred-person function centre. And we won't forget the wellness centre. With a site area of thirty nine hectares, adopting the density of one point five tourist accommodation unit per hectare of land is a maximum of fifty nine units allowable on site, making this double the permissive amount. Why waste council staff time, community time making a DCP and strategy for development like this if we're not going to use it? This is the wrong location for this type of development. For example, the flooding and the setbacks for spraying existing vines, the whole reason for the DCP to look after the area, to encourage tourism to our vineyards by ensuring a sustainable and thriving environment for both the vines and visitors. The development fails to comply with the spray drift buffer requirements for setbacks to vineyards, thereby generating potential ongoing land use conflicts between the tourists and adjoining commercial vineyards. How does council manage slash deal with complaints about the spraying if this was passed?
So is that a question?
Yeah, that one's a question.
Okay, put that through to Director of Planning? Can you just confirm your questions to clarify the things that were still in there?
So with the setbacks, because it doesn't meet the setbacks for the spray drift buffer, if, if there was any conflicts between the tourism and the vineyard, how would council deal with the complaint?
Sorry, I'm happy to hear on the specifics through you, Mr Mayor, the acting manager of development. But in the context of a complaint relating to that, that would be a regulatory services matter and the compliance team would then visit and there'd be investigations as to the veracity of the complaint and the issues in relation to that. If your question was more to the specifics of how we've arrived at the current recommendation on that particular issue, that's DA assessment matter that the acting manager can answer.
Well, it is more about after the fact because we have that issue with, with a lot of things getting passed with noisy, for example. And then it just seems like nothing can actually happen if we have a noise complaint. So I don't want to start, okay, we now have noise complaints, now we have a spraying complaint.
Yep. Sorry if I might on that one, Mr Mayor, through you. Thank you councillor Jurd. The noise is quite, is specifically different because it does have its own legislation that deals with those noise matters and the government has amended other legislation in relation to licence premises to deal with noise specifically. So in relation to the, the matter that's dealing with the spray drift and the overspray, that would, that would continue to be a matter that council would action under protection of environmental operations and would be a compliance regulatory matter in the same way it would occur if we weren't dealing with the DA but were dealing with that as a concern from existing properties where spray drift was an issue.
Okay, right here. Okay. So the development is not capable of providing a flood-free evacuation route for the three hundred guests. The, let's, let's cut that down because there's a lot there that I've wrote. The significant impacts of flooding on our area. We've all seen the significant impacts of flooding on our area and it is important to remember the potential dangers for tourists who may unknowingly drive through flooded roads, ensuring their safety should be top priority for us all. How we all, how will we be, how will we handle the potential noise impacts to adjoining neighbours? Would be managed given the recommendation contained within the acoustic assessment and reinforced by the proposed condition of consent to migrate the impact can be overruled. So currently there is seven wedding venues within two kilometres of this site that residents can hear on any night. I've sent multiple emails to council about current businesses in Lovedale where they see the noise levels and nothing is done. I've put in a complaint to Liquor and Gaming also where they've asked council to fill out these details, but it's best for the resident to do so. This leaves me with this. If this is approved, then who addresses these problems? Because four years later, I still can't get anyone to address the noise complaint for those businesses and I don't want to keep approving things that are going to keep creating problems. I'll finish on this. Currently thirty percent retention for accommodation around the site. So is this really needed for the area? And what conditions do we have on this development for Devia's Road? Will there be any change to it, to the entrance of the development?
Can I put that through to general manager?
Yeah, sorry, if I can ask the acting manager of development to respond to the question about the access road and access to the property?
Yep, so through you, Mr Mayor, the intersection to the development site and Devia's Road will be required to be upgraded to a BAR B A L intersection. So it's a basic left, right turn.
Yep. Yep. Like, so they can actually just get off the current road, yeah?
Yeah, sure. It's a minimum standard for a rural road. So you've got a wide shoulder on either side, which allows for vehicles to pass.
So not a dedicated turning lane?
Sorry.
It's not a dedicated turning lane, it's just wider road, is that correct?
Yes, it's a minimum standard, yeah.
Yep, okay. Right here, all right. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just ask, is there a limit on how many tourist function centres, restaurants, cafes, et cetera, allowed in the Hunter Valley?
The short answer is no.
Oh, okay, so it's open slather?
Yeah, it's basically business risk. Let's want to get some more concise incidents, but yeah, it's just, yeah.
Okay. I also have major concerns about the entrance road for this development. Along this entrance is a causeway, I think that's what it's called. There's an existing water level marker showing two metres. I understand there is not always water in this causeway, but feel it creates a major risk to outer area visitors to this venue. As we have seen in recent times, people from outer area don't understand the risks of driving through floodwaters. Floods can be very unpredictable and certainly don't follow any flood management guidelines. There is also a second flood area on this property. I feel this property is not suitable for this development, as the risk outweighs the benefits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Dixon. Just in that, would you, I heard a question about what could be made for flood or mitigating the flood, potential floods out there for visitors. Would you like a concise answer on that?
Sorry, just making a statement that this is an extensive flood block of land. You can tell that by the documents that we received. I've actually lived in floodplain country, and you can't go on 100-year data or anything like that, because floods don't work like that. They just come and decide their level at the time. So I really just don't, I just think there's a major risk that people from out of town could be driving into something that they don't realise that they're driving into. Unless there's a bridge over that causeway, I can't see any way of making it safe.
Thank you, Councillor Dixon. Councillor King, I know you're beeping next, but you'll have to close debate, so, Councillor King.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a question through the General Manager. I'd just like to take a step back and ask, for, in the interest of the public that's watching, normally a DA comes to council for consideration for a specific reason. What's the reason for this one to come to council tonight?
General Manager.
Sorry, thank you, Councillor King, through you, Mr Mayor. It was called up by councillors to be brought to council for the determination.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with any standards of our DCP that it's not meeting, or nothing out of the ordinary?
No, we would say that there was some community concern that went to councillors, and councillors saw fit to call it before council, but it wasn't here as a result of variations to standards or developed control matters, no.
Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I didn't want to jump in and have my spiel on you. Councillor Jurd wanted to sort of jump in at the beginning there, so I'll use my section here at the end, just to talk a little bit about my reasoning for moving the resolution as it stands, and particularly to perhaps address a few of the concerns that I've seen raised with me via emails or via the speakers here tonight. One of the points raised in some of the correspondence has been around the concern about the economic viability, or why a development like this might go ahead in an area where vacancy rates for accommodations are at a particular level at the moment. For us as a council, the applications that we have come through, be it a residential property or a commercial business, the application is being made by the owner and the applicant on their determination that they can have a successful business or build a property that they can afford to live in or sell or develop. And whether or not it's going to be financially viable, I think, is an interesting point to raise when it comes to a planning consideration. I don't think that in most cases, that is a valid planning mechanism to be weighted against as to whether or not something that is going to be approved is going to be viable or not. It would put a lot of pressure on the councillors making the decision as to whether or not they had the economic experience and understanding of the area to make a ruling on that. Additionally, there was also some concern raised about the existing draft DCP that one of our speakers brought up as well. And in my question to them, I raised the point of the fact that this DA was submitted early in 2024, or at least the pre-DA meeting was undertaken that way, and we heard another speaker mention that the process has been going on for about two years. And as a council, and we've seen this previously with other applications that have been lodged prior to other changes in other sections of our DCP, and all of those applications were always considered on the basis of the guidelines and DCPs that were in place at the time that they were submitted. And to hold an application to a new guideline or a new draft control plan that we have implemented during their assessment process would be a very, I think, dangerous precedent to set in that councillors could decide to modify a DCP chapter or a planning guideline any time to actively affect any ongoing development. And so I think while I agree that many of the goals outlined in our draft DCP for the Vineyards area are definitely things that we wish to see take effect when it comes to the planning and the development within our Vineyards district, that has to be applied to any applications that are submitted once we adopt that new DCP. We cannot, there is also the opportunity that that DCP comes back to council and is not adopted, and to hold this to the standard of something that we have not all agreed to at this time, I think is perhaps not prudent planning processes. And so on that, on those points and on the other information within this report that we've received, in that the application currently falls within our standards, within our DCP as it is in our LEP. And as the General Manager stated, there is no variance outside of perhaps a small spray buffer note that has been discussed by both speakers. That is my position in standing behind supporting the application and the resolution as it stands here tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. I can see you pressed your button there, Councillor Jurd, but as Councillor Hill, close debate with these. Last question, yeah, yep.
I just want clarity about the, with our speaker holding up the blue and the red square and talking about the DCP, and then Councillor Hill talking about the DCP, is that actually right? What's in the blue square is what is actually allowable now? No?
Right.
Okay. That was all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, debate's closed, so we'll now put the matter forward for a vote. Councillor Jurd, I'll just get you to press that button again, sorry, thank you. All in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Mason, Palmaski, Pascoe, Hawkins, Wotton, Harrington and Madden? Those against? Councillor Dixon and Jurd, the motion's carried. Now move on to englobo voting list. Someone to move, Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items GMU2/2025, CC59/2025 and CC61/2025, I counsel adopt the recommendations as printed in the business papers for those items.
Has someone to second? Councillor Hill, put it forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, and moving on to merrill minutes, so there's actually three tonight. I believe that all councils got the last one circulated with regards to the HTP, but starting off with merrill minute number 10, I'll read the recommendation. The council writes to the New South Wales Minister for the Environment, the Honourable Penny Sharp, MLC, and the Member of Sessnock, Mr Clayton Bar, MP. Oh, I've jumbled up my paperwork. Gosh, I shouldn't have a citizenship day on the same day as a meeting. All right. Apologies, councillors, so let's start with merrill minute number nine, because there are in fact three. So this is the regional motions for the 2025 New South Wales Local Government Annual Conference. So I'll read the recommendations. Number one, the council endorsed the regional motions prepared by the Hunter Joint Organisation, the JO, and the lodgment to the 2025 Local Government New South Wales Annual Conference, which is on the 23rd to the 25th of November 2025. And the council directly lodge endorsed regional motions to Local Government New South Wales by closing date of 30th of September 2025. So behind these recommendations is the rationale. So this merrill minute is about seeking endorsement of the seven priority regional motions developed through the Hunter Joint Organisation for lodging to the 2025 Local Government New South Wales Annual Conference. These motions link directly to the LGNSW Conference priorities of jobs and skills, housing and homelessness, roads and infrastructure. So for a bit of background, the LGNSW Annual Conference is the main policymaking event for the local government sector, where issues are debated and motions put forward for the consideration of delegates. Proposed motions should be strategic, affect members statewide, and introduce new or emerging policy issues and actions. It's just not open slather, it has to line up some guidelines there. So suggested motions. In preparation for the 2025 LGNSW Conference, the Hunter JO Chair and Deputy Chair have worked with the Hunter JO staff to prepare the following motions on the basis that they are consistent with the LGNSW Guidelines for Valid Motions as well as being relevant to the Hunter JO's regional advocacy agenda. The list of shared regional motions, which I believe all councils would have had the chance to read, can be found in enclosure two of the report and prepared to be put forward at the Local Government New South Wales Conference on behalf of the 10 Hunter councils. Now, these seek to amplify the shared advocacy priorities of the Hunter councils at both statewide and national scales. And when I say Hunter two, I also want to mention the Mid North Coast. They're also a part of the JO. Emphasise to the New South Wales and federal governments the strength of alignment across the 10 Hunter councils regarding the region's challenges, opportunities and agreed strategic directions. So the regional motions, so for further information, these are consistent with the objectives and the strategic directions, including the Hunter JO Strategic Plan 2035, which are themselves drawn from the community strategic plans of the 10 Hunter JO member councils. And these also have been adapted from the shared regional advocacy priorities of the Hunter mayors to reflect broader New South Wales and industry-wide government, local government focus required for local government New South Wales motions. The lodging of these motions, because the Hunter JO entity itself is not a financial member of the New South Wales Local Government Association, given that the member councils already are, the actual process of lodging the motions to LGNSW needs to be undertaken by individual member councils. These will then be collated by the conference organisers and presented as a shared regional motion, including the names of each councils who have lodged the motion. And again, just referencing those enclosures, one, two and three. So number one, functions and membership of the Hunter Joint Organisation. Number two being the proposed Hunter JO regional motions for LGNSW Annual Conference. And number three, which is in the reports, the criteria for motions. So that's fairly exhaustive of what's, when, where, how and why. So, Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I do a 50/50 split here, if you like, and I might just speak a little bit from the enclosures in regards to some of the specifics of the motions that we're looking to endorse here, that have been provided by the JO to go to Local Government New South Wales. A few of the key ones in the economic development focus area include pushing the New South Wales and federal governments to provide funding support directly to local governments, which can guide a coordinated approach to land use and economic opportunities for post-mining used land. So here in Sessnock, we've got the Ausstar Coal Mine that's in care and maintenance there and is closed down and no longer operational. But this is a motion specifically really focused on our neighbouring councils there in Singleton and Muswellbrook, where this is a major impact for their local economies. Other motions include the skills transition, linking to that economy switch that is looking to happen in our region, that Local Government New South Wales calls on the New South Wales and federal governments to immediately recommence previously funded initiatives that deliver employment and skills programmes locally to transitioning industries. Another one that's quite relevant to us in all councils is advocacy in regards to the re-categorisation of roads. So a number of local residents would be aware that few of our very busy roads here in our LGA are owned by council and not in fact state roads. So some busy roads are state roads and some are still in the responsibility of council. And this motion calls on Local Government New South Wales to petition New South Wales Government to urgently re-categorise roads that meet the criteria or will meet relevant criteria in the short term, and to reprioritise the re-categorisation of local and regional roads to state roads. So for example, in my end of the electorate, we have the road through Buchanan, which we share with Maitland Council, which is still only the responsibility of local councils. However, in the past, when something like Testers Hollow was flooded, that becomes the primary route for a lot of traffic between Currie and Sessnock and Maitland, and especially through to the hospital. And so that would be, I think, a key one to be looked at, to be re-categorised. But I think this is a fantastic initiative from the JO, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing these forward to us to send off to the conference.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. Just before we go on, just want to, just with regards to the local jobs, there's a lot of people that still live in the Sessnock LGA that work in those mines, so it's still very valid, even though all the mines in our LGA have actually shut down. And I'd really like to try and shift a lot of the costs back on to state government and not vice versa as much as we have. Councillor King.
Thank you. Just a question to you, Mr Mayor, because we're already seeing our community being affected by these windmill factories. I was wondering, could you please explain just motion number four in the context of our community for us, please?
Yeah, sure, no problem, Councillor King. So, good question. So I actually might harken back to a conversation I had with our GM just recently, where I'd love to see nodes of government across the New South Wales. And what I mean by that is the Hunter Valley is a quickly growing, very fast-growing area. We're going to hit a million, but all the decisions are made in Sydney or Canberra, depending on federal or state. So to get the key stakeholders into the Hunter Valley, we've seen it firsthand with the Hunter Transmission Project. So I believe there's a lot of dissatisfaction in the community with regards to how that's been handled, rightly or wrongly. That's been the perception I've picked up on. And to ensure that these key stakeholders actually come to our region, to ensure that the workers that are effectively going to, you know, transition from coal-based work, get first dibs on training opportunities, we get first dibs on contracts that may be available through Energy Co. So it's not just a matter of decisions being made from a hub in Sydney. We're going to get that equal representation. I just want to make it clear, it's not a debate necessarily about, you know, pro coal or for coal, I've been pretty outspoken myself about what, you know, my thoughts might be about that and what could be, you know, considered clean coal. It's not about that. It's about making sure that we get the best representation possible on that local level. So that's, speaking to that a bit more in detail, representation. Did I clear that up? Thank you, Councillor, yep.
Thank you, sorry, just a last question. So that would be something that would have a positive impact, for example, on the Pecobum Mountain Road group that's currently trying to communicate with places like Energy Co and the state government about their concerns around the transmission lines, is that correct?
So I guess that's more of a specific, you know, group in our LGA that's looking to advocate their needs, and they've done a really good job as a group. This is more broad than that. I think if we use that as an example, I guess there's a lot of people that, or not, I guess, I know there's a lot of people that have been disenfranchised by the level of communication that's come by. It's been quite, well, the feedback I've received personally, I know other councils might have as well, has been quite sporadic, and it hasn't been consistent, and it hasn't been very, you know, time-effective. So having direct representation here for our LGA that's going to get massively impacted by this. I mean, we're talking about thousands of jobs in the Hunter Valley, all across the Hunter Valley, Muswellbrook, Singleton, all the way through. I am part of a regional reference group for the HTP, which is fantastic. You get good face time with Energy Co and such. But it would be great to have organisations like this, boots on the ground in the Hunter Valley, ready to act swiftly, instead of stagnant, which, that's my opinion, and that's the reason why I back particularly point number four. No further questions? Put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. And we'll move on to merril minute ten because that comes after nine. The recommendation being that council write to the New South Wales Minister for the Environment, the Honourable Penny Sharp, M L C, and the Member of Cessnock, Mr Clayton Bar, M P, seeking that Cessnock City Council be reclassified from a metropolitan levy area, an M L A, to a regional levy area. Now, I, I will read this, so just for the sake of transparency and for people that may need to hear this audibly. Cessnock City Council is currently charged the metropolitan levy area, which is an M L A, which is a waste levy rate of a hundred and seventy four dollars and twenty cents per tonne. The same rate applied to inner city, inner, inner Sydney councils. In contrast, regional levy area, the R L A councils are charged one hundred dollars and thirty cents. So seventy odd dollars difference, seventy, you know, three ninety. This discrepancy places a significant and unfair burden on our rate payers. For example, at ten thousand tonnes per year, Cessnock pays around seven hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars more than if we were an R L A council. At twenty thousand tonnes per year, this rises to around one point four seven eight million dollars. And you can think of where that money could be better spent in our L G A rather than this, what I perceive to be incorrectly defined as a metro levy area. Despite being clearly a regional community, which we are, Cessnock was included in the metropolitan levy area when the levy boundaries were extended in oh six, oh seven to the Hunter and Illawarra. This classification has remained unchanged, even though our economic, social and geographic profile aligns with regional councils, councils, not metropolitan Sydney. On top of all of this, council has also committed around eighty million dollars over the twenty, over the next twenty years for a new waste cell to manage our own waste responsibly. This investment strengthens the case for fairer treatment in how levy categories are applied. So it's an ongoing debate with the New South Wales Levy Review. This provides an opportunity for the government to correct this inequity. Both L G N S W and the Hunter Joint Organisation have already called for a reassessment of levy boundaries to ensure rural and regional L G As are not fairly, not unfairly penalised. Reclassification to a regional levy area will reduce costs for council and rate payers and better reflects the reality of our community. So to me, it's pretty cut and dry. We're, we're simply being overcharged, we're being miscategorised and I'm not the only one, you know, expressing this. So I'll open this up for, to the floor for some questions. Councillor Lee, or debate?
Thank you, Mayor. More than happy to support this one. Earlier today, I sent through some alternate wording, which is a little bit lower on the screen, and that's just to include the three state MPs that cover our L G A. So hopefully we're happy to, to adapt that.
Yeah, totally, totally agree. I did agree to that and I don't think I got the updated one in front of me. So yes, more than happy to include that, we want to include everyone. So just to make sure that the wording's clear and so everyone's aware of what's, what the actual changes are. So the recommendation now reads, the council writes to the New South Wales Minister for Environment, the Honourable Penny Sharp, M L C, the Member for Cessnock, Mr Clayton Bar, M P, the Member for Upper Hunter, Mr Dave Laizel, M P, and the Member for Maitland, the Honourable Jenny Aginson, M P, seeking that Cessnock City Council be reclassified from a metropolitan levy area, an M L A, to a regional levy area, an R L A. So, thank you. So councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Whatton. It's good to see this motion come forward as a merril minute. Councillors will be aware that I put forward this, this very, very similar motion in a notice of motion just prior, just sort of your merril minutes coming out earlier before this meeting. And it's sort of, we're in lockstep basically in terms of pushing for this type of reclassification. Councillor Hawkins and I had been, had been discussing this sort of topic of waste when the memo that we received after your. And I found that it was interesting to see the map for our area and noticing that somewhere like, somewhere like our neighbour in Singleton is classed as a regional levy area, whereas, whereas we're the metropolitan area. It must be quite an interesting discussion over the fence in places like Brangston where someone is paying the metropolitan levy area in their street and their neighbour maybe paying the regional one. And so I think that sort of really emphasises the, the point we're looking to make is that our area is generally across the board, far more suited to the regional levy rating, as well as the, what you noted, the work that we're putting in to manage our own waste locally. You know, we have a longstanding resolution of council from years before I was ever on, elected to the, to the council, that we don't take waste up here in the Hunter from the, down in the city in Sydney. And for those Sydney councils that perhaps struggle to find ways to best manage their waste, I think we're, we're a bit of a shiny light in terms of being on the front foot for it. As much as I'd like to see a major overhaul to the entire waste levy process as, as a whole, I do understand that a great deal of the money that our council sends to the state government is, is allocated directly to general revenue, which I think we would find any argument with the state government about trying to reduce their money that they have available to spend freely will be a hard fought battle. And so in the interim, I think this is a fantastic advocacy point to make, to, to try to get us reclassified to that regional levy area.
Thank you councillor Hill, and would make for an interesting debate with Singleton neighbours. Someone mentioned smeat, why don't we just dump it at Singleton? If only it was that simple. Councillor Pascoe.
Thank you, Mayor Whatton. I just had two quick questions that I'm hoping the general manager will be willing to answer, just based on feedback that I've been seeing. The mics don't like us today. The first one is, how likely is this to be received?
I'll put it through. I can answer that, but I'll, I'll get the general managers as well.
I, I already like, I'm all for it, but I have a feeling that they're going to say no, but I'd like to know whether this has been done before.
It's definitely been an ongoing discussion piece. I'm not the first one. Definitely, I will put this through to the expert regardless, so I'll put this through to the Director of Works.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Councillor Pascoe, I believe that there's been several requests from previous councils since two thousand and six, when the, the, this, this charge was applied in a regional metropolitan sense, which was introduced in two thousand and six. The number of, I'm not familiar with, but I do know that as far back as two thousand and six, we've, we've made requests to state government.
Okay. And I, again, know the answer myself, but I just thought for transparency, it might be worth breaching. There is no way to backdate this, it's there. Because I know it was brought up a lot.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. No, I don't believe so.
I just thought I'd plug that out.
Wouldn't it be nice? Now we've got councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mayor Whatton. Just a quick question. You're fully supportive of this initiative. The figure you rolled out before for the ten thousand tonne and twenty thousand, do we have sort of, I'm just curious, the exact sort of figure for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five waste? What, we actually did go through the tip there that we could potentially be saving just on the last year alone?
I'll put that through to the director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Could I take that on notice, please councillor Madden? We would have those figures, but I didn't have them with me at the moment.
Yeah, no worries, thanks.
Councillor King.
Thank you, Mr May. Just a question to one of the directors, if they could answer it also. I'm just, I want to sort of draw off the point because cost shifting is a big issue for local government of the area at the moment from the state government. So I just want to ask, do you know when they collect the waste levies from us? When it goes to treasury, does it go to a general fund or is it committed to something? So can they decide where to put the money back to after they received it?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor King. A majority of the, the waste levy goes to general funds. The percentage is around eighty percent.
Yeah, so meaning they could if they wanted to reinvest in the local government.
That would be a question for the state government, but yes, there is flexibility.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that point because there's a number of things now in local government where we're being forced to, you know, the brain cure. And what ended up happening is our residents have to pick up the buck at the end of the day because treasury on New South Wales Parliament looks after Sydney, in my opinion, and not regional areas. So I just want to make that point, that if they decided to reinvest that money into regional areas like ours, they could actually do that because it's uncommitted funding that they're receiving from our waste levies. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I, I think it's just important to note that we are looking at ways to save money, whether it's the reclassification of roads, whether it's our reclassification at our waste levy. We're out there actively looking for ways we can reduce the costs on our rate payers. We're going through a sustainability study at the moment and there's a very likely chance that we'll be asking for a rate rise. And I just want everybody out there to know that we're trying everything we can to avoid a rate rise. Whether it's inevitable or not is still to be seen, but this council is out proactively and councillor Hill and I, we're discussing ways that we would be able to streamline, I guess you would say, or where we could save money or improve council. So yeah, I think it's just important that we, we're on the front foot. We're, we're doing more than just sitting back and, and we're asking for another handout from our rate payers. We are looking at things we can do and whether it is circumstances that have changed, traffic volumes on roads that mean they need to be reclassified or our waste services, there's, there's plenty of things that we're trying to do. And I think I'd like to commend the staff that are always working for things and that are looking at ways that we can become a more efficient organisation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hawkins. Just while we're on the topic of communicating with our public, I, I actually encourage the public to residents of Cessnock to actually write to the local M P or local MPs. It's one thing that I think sometimes can become white noise, it's going through the motions, L G N S W. Nothing hits an MP harder than hitting from members of the community, quote unquote, civilian side. I'd encourage members of the community to get engaged with this. If you'd like to see some action, please join us and see what we can do. Now put it forward. No, no other discussion? No? Okay, we'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, now moving on to M M eleven. So this is with regards to the Hunter Transmission Project environmental, environmental impact statement. This is the one that came through late to councillors, based off information that I received late. So the recommendation, I'll read it as written, that council notes that staff are preparing and will lodge a submission on the Hunter Transmission Project Environmental Impact Statement, the E I S, by the due date of the twenty fourth of September twenty twenty five. Point two, that council acknowledged the community's concerns, which have been listened to and incorporated into council submission. And point number three, the council requests that a copy of the final submission be circulated to councillors once lodged, once lodged. So council notes that the environmental impact statements, the E I S, for the Hunter Transmission Project is currently on public exhibition until the twenty fourth of September twenty twenty five. Council also notes that the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure is the approval body. Council further notes that our staff will be preparing and lodging a comprehensive submission to the E I S process. This submission will reflect not only council's own analysis, but will also acknowledge the incorporates, acknowledge and incorporates, incorporates the concerns and feedback raised by residents and community groups across our local government area. Council recognises the importance of listening to our community and thanks those who have taken the time to express their views on this matter. The input received has assisted council in shaping a well-informed and well-rounded submission, ensuring that the issues most important to our community are clearly represented. Council encourages and continues to encourage community members to maintain contact with Energy Co through the consultation period and to write to D P I, or D P H I, with their own submissions as part of the E I S exhibition process, period. It is therefore recommended that council formally endorses the preparation and lodgment of the submission by staff prior to the exhibition deadline and that a copy of the final submission be provided to councillors for information. Now, it's, it's a major impacting programme and I did reference E I, Energy Co before as point four of one of the J O's motions that will be going through to L G N S W. I just want to take the time to acknowledge members of the community that have reached out, that is referenced, you know, broadly in this, this merril minute. We do hear you, we are representing you. Council staff are working very hard and I want to thank council staff for their involvement and their input. And please communicate directly as well. It's not just coming to us directly, please engage directly with Energy Co. That's, it, it only helps the process. And please remember that submissions, if you want to make a submission, you can do until the twenty fourth of September. So is there any questions or debate? Councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm so happy that we've put this merril minute through, or put, that you've put it up anyway, and hopefully everyone votes for it. I just wanted to double check. So if I was to put in a submission on this, right, and be an environmental impact statement, this would include roads, right? Like, it would include, the environmental impacts would include all roads that might be used for this project?
In short, yes.
Yeah, okay. So why I wanted to mention that is I want the public to be aware just how much this doesn't just affect Millfield or Pecoben, this affects the whole of the L G A. That we had that briefing here where they were saying they were going to be using Wall and By Road to go out to Millfield, up to six hundred vehicles could be per day to, on that road, which will be majorly affecting our infrastructure that way. Then you've got Pecoben Mountain Road. If any of you have driven that road, it is sheer drop down the side worse than going out to Wall and By. So I encourage every resident of our L G A to put in a submission. If you're not sure how to do one, reach out, I will happily help or get you in contact with someone that is better than me at writing these. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judd. Any further discussion? No one online? We'll now put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Now moving on through the agenda, any motions of urgency? Haven't received anything? No, no? No motions of urgency? Now moving on to items to be discussed, so officers' reports, P twenty five slash twenty twenty five. This is to do with D A eight slash twenty twenty four slash five thirty slash one, proposing the erection of a dwelling and ancillary swimming pool. Can I have someone to move that, please? Councillor Hill? Seconded, councillor Hawkins. Speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Whatton. Yeah, I'll just speak briefly to give some background to it for anyone looking along online or at home. This, this D A is for a property listed here in the report as William Street Paxton, but perhaps more appropriately Redgum Road, if you look at it on the map, as the location for the frontage for the envelope, building envelope for this property. This is a, a conservation section of land that was, I think, created during a, a previous subdivision and back a few years prior to some changes to the minimum lot size for a building envelope on a conservation lot. It was issued with a, a building envelope. And so this application, while does, the report does detail an eighty percent variation in the current minimum lot size, my understanding, and I, and I might seek some, some clarification from the acting director of planning on it, but I believe that the, was this building envelope that was issued to this lot done when the minimum lot size was much smaller? Is that correct? Excellent, yep. And so while it does, reading this report is having a very high variation of eighty percent, I think the, the important thing to note is that the building envelope was issued to this lot under different planning conditions prior in the past. I think the application itself is, presents quite a beneficial outcome for this lot of land and council as a whole in that the, the applicant will be able to, I guess, be the, the, the guardian of this conservation lot once the property is built and once it's being occupied. Currently, the report. lot once the property is built and once it's being occupied. Um currently, um the report speaks about some issues with um people accessing this and this sort of conservation area through uh where this lot is currently stationed. Um and I think that this will be a beneficial outcome for council um to allow this uh property to be built in this location and then for the custodianship of this conservation lot uh to be continued into future by the landholder.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm supportive of the proposal. Just had a very simple uh recommendation to make around an inclusion of a condition of consent requiring that the applicant uh lodge a change of address before they are issued with an OC. So it's, so the address is referred to as Redgum Close. Yeah, just so the address is referred to as Redgum Close. So I've got an alternate uh amendment I'd like to propose, which is up on the screen there. So prior to the issue of an occupation certificate for the dwelling, the private certifier is to be provided with evidence that an application for house numbering has been approved by council, ensuring that the dwelling is addressed to the street frontage, of which access is proposed for emergency and service providers.
Okay, so we've got the proposed amendment there. Happy to adopt? Yep. Okay, well, that forms the the motion. Uh councillor Jurd?
Thank you, Mayor. Um what was the minimum lot size in two thousand fifteen when this first was brought to council?
I'll put it through to the acting director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Forty hectares.
Oh, that's right, yeah. I did read that, and then I'm thinking I can't find it. Okay, so how, so when this was brought in in two thousand fifteen, how long does does that person usually have to then apply for a DA to build a house?
There's no timeframe.
There's no timeframe, so it's not like the other ones. Okay. Um does it matter if the CLP two thousand and eleven change? Does that matter?
No.
No? Okay. And who was notified, who was notified about the DA? Like, how was it advertised?
It was put out through, uh notified in accordance with the community consultation plan.
Yep.
Um we had approximately sixty-six people notified, and it was everyone around the property. So we're aware that the frontage uh information was a bit incorrect. So I can have the manager speak to that of the specific streets that were notified, but it was all the properties around.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Just sometimes it's not always in there, and I like to just make sure, um or that I've missed it, okay? Um what, it's flood zone, though, is that correct? Where this house is going to be could flood?
Yes.
Yeah. So my question is, we all know that most people have to have flood insurance, and this might not be really a council question. But if we, say, allowed a house to build in flood zone, and then it floods, and then they uh they have to apply for their insurance, that, does that not set a precedent to affect everybody around, like, insurance premium? Do you know?
It may have an impact. When it comes to, I might have our engineers speak to this, but the majority of the local government area is flood affected.
Yep.
Um to prevent housing in an area, in those areas, we we would not be able to meet our housing targets or have a lot of housing in this local government area. But I um I may have our engineers speak to that in particular.
Um so a council's flood DCP allows um dwellings to be constructed up to a H three, so it's a H three category, as long as they meet the flood planning level, which is half metre above the one percent AEP.
Yes. Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to commend our planning staff. Um for twelve months, they've worked with this applicant to address concerns, the sensitive areas. Um I think it's good to see that we're working with applicants to make these these parcels usable. Um and and having somebody living on site, I I think will have a far better outcome for the management of the property. So, yeah, I'd just like to to thank our staff. Um so if you could pass that down to them. Um because, yeah, it's, this is a really good outcome, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins. I think the two submissions that we did receive, correct me if I'm wrong, they were in favour for that very reason. So uh it will reduce littering, which is a big expense, and bike riders and things like that. So uh okay, well, a- any further discussion? Uh we'll now put it forward for a vote. All in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Hawkins, Wotton, Harrington and Madden, those against. Councillor Dixon and Jurd, motions carried. And moving on to report number CC fifty-four slash twenty twenty-five, the draft Cessnock City Library Strategy for twenty-five to thirty-five. Can I have someone to move that? Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Lee. Uh speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Just going to quickly bring up one of the additional reports here. But I am, I find it quite interesting to be reading through the uh Cessnock City Library Strategy at risk of uh being labelled a nerd or something such like that as this at this point. Um but um it was fantastic to see some of the feedback that was given to us um by the community in this strategy. Um as someone who's been, you know, I guess, perhaps lacking in my attendance to some of the local uh libraries since my primary school days, um I do oft- often uh pop in and and for other purposes into the um local library at Curry, um and have and uh popped into the Cessnock one a couple of times recently as a part of council doings. But the um one of the standout um bits of information listed in the uh strategy that we've got really does highlight the fact that I think we've perhaps um over the past decade or so been uh underinvesting in expanding our library services. We often talk a lot in this chamber about the ever-growing population and ever-growing housing need and and the infrastructure burden that puts on council. Um but one of our key services, such as our public libraries, is something uh that also uh will strain under the stress of our growing population. Uh and this strategy earmarks uh some of the requirements that um we really need to look into the future about the possibility of expanding some of the library services that we provide here, if not by expanding the physical footprint of of council uh buildings or libraries uh in our main streets, then by trying to diversify and expand on the way in which we deliver our library services across the LGA. The strategy talks on a couple of key points around how that could be done into the future, outside of just expanding uh our existing buildings or changing their layouts. Uh it talks about ideas such as um uh mobile library outreach vans, and talks about some descriptions about other councils in New South Wales that do that, especially for uh servicing those areas of our LGA outside of sort of the Curry, Cessnock, Frankston uh main townships out, especially uh to the far west, um and the more rural areas, uh out as, as, it's a Mulbring or Wallenby. Um another couple of the ideas put forward about pop-up libraries uh or like library vending machines is something that I have not really sort of experienced in other areas, um in cities that I've sort of been visiting for. But I think it looks and kind of sounds like a really fantastic way to offer uh a diverse service uh for what is a very varied user base. There's some information in regards to sort of the percentage of the users uh for our libraries. Uh we've still got a quite high um patronage from sort of older citizens and senior citizens in our um LGA, as well as from the very young sort of school-aged students who are using it. Um and as someone who spent a bit of time sort of in study rooms at universities and have recently toured the the new study hub, um which is adjacent to the Curry Library there in the Curry Community Centre, I think some of the feedback from the community around wanting to get some more modernised spaces that will allow um students to go and do their sort of academic study, well, not just students of young age, but students of all ages to go and do academic study uh at our public libraries in quieter study rooms or have access to technology that they otherwise wouldn't have at home. Uh I think it's fantastic. And and to see all of that outlined in our strategy um uh as we move ahead with our libraries over the next uh five to ten years is is fantastic. But it does sort of, I'd recommend if you haven't had a look at um the strategy, um and you have an interest in books like I do, that it's a, it's it's really uh interesting to see what the community thinks they should uh, we should be doing in our libraries around the LGA and uh sort of to get your head around the challenges that we're going to experience in trying to service our growing community through this uh vital community service.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Dixon?
Uh thank you, Mr Mayor. Um first, I'd just like to comment on um the idea of um lockers. I just think that's a um a really good idea. A lot of people um unavailable office hours for the library, um to be able to pick up books, if they could um like order them online and pick them up at a locker. I know I've used a locker to pick up parcels before, and it's a great, great uh way to be able to, people to access things. So I think that's a really good idea. Um I was just a bit concerned, there's no, uh nothing in the documentation about fixing the problem of uh items not being returned that were borrowed. Um we recently did that debt write-off of twenty-three thousand. Are council doing anything to address this problem?
Uh through to the director?
Um thank you, councillor Dixon. Yes, we are, is the short answer to that. Um whilst it's not covered in the strategy, it is something that we do on an operational basis.
Yep.
Excuse me. Um this strategy is more looking forward. What are we going to do broadly with our uh library facilities? And um now we'll pass on some of those comments that councillors have made already to our staff.
Yep, okay, thank you. And um I'd just like to um encourage everyone to go to the council website and read um meeting agendas for each council meeting. Um in the documents of this draft, you will see that it contains United Nations seventeen stability goals. I encourage everyone to research this document and actually see what it's really about. All right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Councillor Jurd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Wotton. I actually found this quite interesting to read, like, like councillor Hill saying he read the whole thing and felt a bit like, was it a nerd? Is that what you said? Yeah. Um so currently, we have a population sixty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two people, but they're saying ninety-six thousand by twenty thirty-six. You reckon a like-for-like hospital would be improved infrastructure? Um it, I mean, I'm going to bring this up every chance I get, because, I mean, it it did talk about infrastructure and the hospital in there. And, I mean, in the nineteen eighties, we had a population of twenty to twenty-five thousand people, and our hospital was built with significant contributions from miners and the local community, initially funded through their efforts. Now, in twenty twenty-five, what does our government promise for our area? That that's about tripled in size and still growing? A brand-new hospital that doesn't have an MRI machine or a birthing suite, yet we did that in two thousand, in nineteen eighty. But we have current, we have urgent care. Honestly, class is a metro for when it comes to waste levy, yet here we are, still very regional when it comes to services needed here. As much as I found a lot of this interesting to read, there was a couple of things that lost me with this um strategy. I'm like councillor Dixon here, do not know why United Nations Sustainable Goals have to do with the library. If you don't know what they are, they are on page one ninety-nine on the library enclosures. One of the ones that it does sustainable goals is sustainable cities, so I'm not sure and communities what that has to do with the library. Next is the fact that not longer we had the write-offs. And I know I spoke to the director and the GM about this, and it's been an internal process, but I think that it should have been a part of this strategy. It would have actually made sense to me if we had that in this strategy. Also, um a twenty-four-seven library with access cards. Not a huge fan of this, just because of what we currently have at, what we currently had at the Tave. Could that happen at our library? Thank you.
Okay, uh thank you, councillor Jurd. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Um we'll put it forward for a vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous? And moving on to report CC fifty-five, twenty twenty-five, it's the minutes of the Aboriginal Torres Strait Island Advisory Committee, the meeting held on the first of twenty twenty-five. Have someone to move that? Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Palmauski. Uh speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just briefly, I wanted to speak generally on the um undertaking of the numerous community representatives that we've had coming along, coming along to this council committee, um and to say thank you for the the effort that they're putting in to come and work alongside councillors and and the community uh on this committee. Um with a special thank you to um to Corey Robinson, who stepped up to the plate and took the role of chairperson at this meeting in particular, this committee, and I think did a fantastic job. It is a previously been the historical standard of this committee that a community representative put... Is that the unofficial hurry-up uh for tonight? Is it the turn off the mic? Um the, that it's generally been the historic precedent that the community representative steps up and and chairs a meeting, and that the meeting elects a a chair each time the committee meets. Um and as someone who chaired the first one, I know it can be a bit of a daunting task in in chairing a committee, especially one such as this, that can have some um some very heated sort of debates across the chamber. I think um Corey did a really fantastic job uh at chairing this committee, um perhaps uh to his uh, to his own um credit, he may get pushed into the job again at the next meeting for his uh hard work. Um but one of the main points that come out of the this recent uh committee meeting was some of the feedback that was given to councillors and discussed at the committee around trying to improve council's implementation of our now adopted community uh action plan. Um and the way in which that some of the actions that we need to be addressing in that plan really need to incorporate um the participation of local Aboriginal groups and community groups uh to execute those plans, because currently a lot of the actions fall within the remit of particular council um uh sort of management areas. And I think when the plan is is being developed to address um shortcomings in council's policies uh to support and represent uh the Aboriginal community uh for our LGA, it's important that we work together with them so that we, the responsibility is shared for the implementation of these actions in this plan. So thank you to all the representatives that have been coming along, both council and community related. Um and I look forward to the future meetings.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Jurd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Wotton. I noticed that the meetings are back on Fridays again, but I also noted that a lot of members weren't leaving early. I remember last term, when I was in this committee, the meetings were long, being like three hours, so I can understand. But we had some good conversations, one being about the emergency plans, where we had two committee, community members, sorry, come to the committee about this issue. I still remember this conversation, because I I spoke to them about um being out at Murray's Run that just that week, where they had a community group with radios, a database on who lived where and with what skills, so that if that, if there was emergency, they knew they could help each other. They didn't have to rely on, like, emergency services, which are too far away when it comes out there. Um and I asked these two representatives if that is what they were trying to achieve, was it, you know, an emergency group so that the the community as a whole can actually help each other, you know, because they were quite concerned about the fires um at Weston. This, this is roughly when it was. Um but based on what they said, it wasn't as a community as a whole. It was not based like that. So unfortunately, until it's a um a community based as a whole, based on location, and how you're going to help the whole community, I'm really not interested.
Okay, thank you, councillor Jurd. Uh any further discussion from councillors? Can I just confirm how many members are actually attending that committee? There's quite a few. But, well, members of the community. Seven or eight. So a pretty good buy-in across the the board, so. Seven, okay. Yeah, indicates good buy-in. Okay, well, uh no further discussion or debate. We'll now put it forward for a a vote. All in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Hawkins, Harrington, Madden and Wotton, those against. Is councillor Dixon, Jurd and King. Uh it's carried. Now move on to report CC fifty-six, fifty-six slash twenty twenty-five. It's the election of the deputy mayor, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um. So we'll need to move, move the recommendation, move the motion. Councillor King, uh seconded. Uh councillor Mason? All right, all in favour? Any, any discussion? Uh put it over to the director.
Thank you. Um this is to a two-part process. So the first part of the motion that you're considering is basically that you're going to have a deputy mayor, the term of the deputy mayor, and the the um how you're going to go about voting for it. Then after that, we'll move into the election process.
Yeah, just to clarify, I did that wrong. I remember the very first meeting we had, I did this wrong, so I didn't want to do it again. So we're moving the recommendation. So we've got a first and second, so um put, are we all in favour? Are we all in favour? Yes. Yep. Where about, yep, okay, so we're unanimous? Yes. Okay, I'll hand it over to the Director of Corporate Community Services.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Wotton. So following the council decision to have a deputy mayor and the term of it, and that the voting for the deputy mayor is going to be by open voting, I can advise that we've had two nominations submitted for the position of deputy mayor, being councillors Harrington and Hill. So the voting for that deputy mayor position will be by open vote, show of hands. So I would ask those councillors who wish to vote for councillor Hill to raise their hands and I will call out their names. Sorry, councillor Harrington is the first one. My apologies. That could have got very interesting. Stitcher. So sorry, councillor Harrington, those councillors voting for councillor Harrington. Councillors Dixon, Joad, King, Mason, Pascoe and Wotton. And those councillors voting for councillor Hill. Is councillor Grine, councillor Hill, councillor Lee, councillor Palmauski and councillor Hawkins. If my maths is correct.
I think I've got it on councillor Harrington.
Online councillors.
I think Harrington's for Harrington.
I would assume councillor Harrington was for Harrington. And councillor Mason, Madden is voting for councillor Hill. Yep. And again, if my maths is correct, I will announce.
Sorry, what was that, last bit?
I assume councillor Madden, that you are putting your hand up for councillor Hill as the deputy mayor.
I did put my hand up, that's correct.
Thank you. Again, if my math is correct, I would allow that councillor Harrington. Councillor Harrington is the deputy mayor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Tracy.
Congratulations councillor Harrington. Can't get a photo with you because you're not here in person, but look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And also I want to thank councillor Hill too, for his term as deputy, deputy mayor. Yeah. So thank you very much for your assistance and we'll still work together.
Very interesting.
Okay, now, moving on to report CC57/2025. It's the appointment of representatives to internal and external committees following casual vacancy. So can I have someone to move that, please? Councillor King, seconded councillor Joad. Any discussion?
No debate.
No debate?
I know, you need.
Yeah.
We actually need two nominations.
Yes, so while there's no debate, we still have to take care of some business and fill in some blanks. So from point one, I'd be looking to place myself into the alternate for Oster. And I personally can't for any others because I'm already on those. So I have had some discussion with other councillors, so let's deal with point number two with regards to the Hunter and Central Coast Regional Planning Panel for an alternate. So anyone be interested in joining that as an alternate? Councillor Joad? No, yeah. Anyone else? Councillor King? Well, we don't necessarily have to have one, it's always nice to have an alternate. Yep. Okay, so councillor King is the alternate. And then point three, we are looking for an alternate for the council-initiated awards committee. Yeah, councillor Joad?
I just asked when they, when they meet, I can't remember when they meet.
As need be, I don't think there's really a set agenda. Do you have any, anything to add to that? Once or twice a year, so the, the chance that you get against it for one of those is pretty slim as an alternate.
I just didn't want to commit to something if I had to work, you know, it's frustrating when you have to constantly put in apologies. So you put my name there if nobody else wants to do it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Joad? And I'll just read point four, that, so we're all across it and the community's across it, that, that council notes the dissolution of the local traffic committee, the LTC, following changes to the Transport for New South Wales delegation to local councils, which we heard directly from Jenny Atchison, MP, with their meeting a couple of weeks ago with all councillors. Councillor Joad, do you have another? Okay, councillor Hill?
Thank you. Apologies to the minute taker, just on the fact that point number two has councillor Hawkins leaving the meeting within the resolution, just before we vote on the resolution. That's okay. And I do have a question just in regards to what you were discussing there, Mayor Wotton, in regards to the traffic committee. Perhaps a question for the Director of Works and Infrastructure. Is there any practical change when it comes to the work that our council staff will be doing in regards to what the traffic committee previously dealt with at its meetings?
Director?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Hill, no, it won't change the duties and responsibilities of the, the staff and the technical experts that are on the forum, as we call it now. So they still have the same role.
Excellent.
Okay, no further discussion. We'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Moving on to report CC58 with regards to the draft financial statements for 24/25 financial year. Does someone to move that, please? Councillor Lee, seconded. Councillor Grine. Any discussion? Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I just want to have a good whinge about this, as per usual. So because I noticed in this report, there's a lot of references to the need for a special rate variation. So I just want to point out a couple of things. First, on net operating result before capital. From the commentary on page 55 in the agenda, the net operating result before capital grants and contributions was $33.8 million deficit compared to a projected $29.5 million deficit. I distinctly remember that projected $29.5 million deficit because I've asked about it in previous meetings. From the commentary on page 58, it's noted that the $33.8 million operating deficit before capital demonstrates a structural imbalance between operating revenue and expenses. This reinforces the importance of financial sustainability initiatives, including the proposed SRV. And from council's website, it says, "Council's long-term financial plan indicates multiple years of ongoing deficits when capital grants and contributions are excluded." Now, that figure is being used to justify a special rate variation. Yet when I brought it up, on a number of occasions, it was downplayed as unimportant. The response was, "At a statutory level, we are in a surplus." Yet records show that council has been in a deficit before capital every year since at least 2018, except for 2022, when an asset was sold off. On capital works, from the commentary on page 59, "Council delivered $64 million of cash-funded capital works and recognised $56 million of developer-dedicated assets, bringing the total additions to $126.9 million." "I've previously stated my concern about the volume of capital works councils taking on and how it impacts the other areas of business like maintenance. And as I suspected, my concerns are verified on page 57 of the commentary. While council is successful in delivering a large capital works programme of around $64 million cash, the recognition of dedicated and found assets increases the reported additions to $126 million, $126.9 million. These developer handovers increase infrastructure in the LGA, but critically also add to council's future maintenance and renewal liabilities, contributing to the backlog and funding challenges." On unrestricted cash, from the commentary on page 59, "Council's available cash was only $4 million at year-end, with most funds externally or internally restricted. This tight cash position reinforces the need for financial sustainability measures, including the SRV. But last year's financial, last year's annual statement shows the cash position was at $3.3 million. So I'm a bit perplexed as to why it was not addressed then. Now that figure's being used to justify an SRV. When we started this term of council and I questioned these numbers, the response was, "On a statutory level, we are in a surplus. Council has cash to splash for the headlines. Even though we were in a deteriorating position for a long time and I was trying to ring the alarm bells, trying to convince everyone, we need to look at this and address it. Our position now isn't that much different from last year. Why didn't we do something then? It's been getting worse since at least 2018. Why didn't we do anything sooner? Now we find ourselves in a position where we are being advised our only way out is a special rate variation and I find this very disappointing to say the least, because this could have been addressed years ago." Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Any further discussion? Any questions? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Perhaps I've got a couple of questions sort of coming from what councillor King has noted in his comments. He referred quite a lot to information within this report, which indicates and backs up sort of council's current position on the requirement for financial sustainability initiatives. However, there's been quite a lot of additional information at the end of that report as well in the attachments in the enclosure that talks specifically around the condition of council's assets, sort of absent of any of the ongoing capital works projects. And I understand that the reviews into council's assets, sort of a major overhaul that was undertaken was not completed until, I believe, sometime during last year. And I made a few notes in regards to some of the information there at the back. But I think some of the comments that councillor King made perhaps raised some more questions in relation to the main report. So if I just jump back to one of the pages there that were being referenced, councillor King was mentioning the capital expenditure of $63.8 million. And I think I would agree in, in principle with councillor King's position in regards to sort of the handover of assets that council receives from developers with that additional capital additions of $126.95 million. I think it shows a real need for the... I'll get the hint, Mayor Wotton. Really highlights the need.
It's not me, I apologize.
I think it really highlights the need for the New South Wales state government to seriously consider an overhaul to the way development contributions are collected and the ability for councils to, to sequester monies from developers. Because the current system that we have really, I think, fails to provide us with funding to maintain those types of assets that are handed over to us in the long term. But some of the concerns around the continued completion of large sort of sums of capital works. I, I guess, I guess my question for councillor King would be, is your current position that we should, I guess, cease actioning works that we're doing or stop pursuing any, any works that we're getting grant funding for, like those that are mentioned on page 57, be it the Western Bear's amenities in Grandstand, the Currie-Nepal facilities or the Stormwateran Works in North Rothbury or the Soysgully Road rehabilitation? I guess, because when looking at the asset information in the, in the back of the financial statements, I see there's quite a lot of degrading assets across the board, not just focused on roads. And while some of those projects there are definitely related to roads being, roads and drainage being sort of the North Rothbury ones and the Soysgully Road one and the Wallonby Road grant monies that we've received. There's also a lot of, I guess, worrying information in the asset maintenance section about our buildings. The, the asset maintenance information that is provided in the back states that 65% of all of council's building assets are rated at either the level three or level four standard, which is sort of, level three is satisfactory but needs maintenance and level four is in need of renewal. And so I think my worry is that if council were to not be considering the long-term maintenance of our assets and foregoing action on grant funding like this that we're being undertaking, I think the grant funding is providing us a decent temporary crutch to fill a lot of maintenance that otherwise would not be getting done. And I think that it's probably wrong to point to that kind of infrastructure work being done that's being fully funded by grant funding and not by ratepayers to address that problem. But I think it also provides a decent additional highlight for why, why we need to be reassessing that and why we need to be advocating to the state government for better methodologies to pay for maintenance on assets that we get from developers and assets that become part of our LGA due to the massive amount of growth we have going on. The state government pushes housing targets on us and they do supply some grant money for us for enabling infrastructure. But I think they really need to consider the amount of cost they're shifting to us for asset maintenance long-term, past just when the new development finishes, the houses being built.
Just in your, thank you councillor Hill, there was a question in there for councillor King. Okay, so statement. Any further questions or debate? Just for my end, I just want to highlight the, again, cost shifting. It is a major burden for councillors, for councillors across our LGA to, to bear, basically. Enough's been said on that through, through, through tonight, basically. But it is a major area that, that, you know, for sustainability-wise, we do need better methodologies across the board as we move forward. So we'll now put this forward, there's no further discussion. Put it forward for a vote. All in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Hawkins, Wotton, Harrington and Madden. Those against? Councillor Joad? Motion's carried. Now moving on to report CC60/2025, it's the Resolutions Tracking Report. Has someone to move that? Councillor Grine, seconded councillor Lee. Discussion, councillor Joad?
Oh, hi, thank you, Mayor Wotton. I've just got a quick question for hopefully the Director of Planning. If that's okay. I got a, I got your email back today about my question. So for everyone around here, my question was, in the report, it got flagged with me that the shared zone was moved to September 2026. And my question was, why is it getting moved to 2026 when we actually want this fixed now? You wrote back and said that that was just like a formal, can you just explain it a little bit more? It was more of a, the plan was 2026, but it doesn't mean that the job's not going to get done to 2026. Is that correct?
The motion to ask the, put that towards the Director of Works?
Yep.
Infrastructure?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Joad, the 2026 date is related to the CBD master plan, the revision of the CBD master plan, yeah. And the removal of or the inclusion or improvements to that shared zone, we want to ensure that is aligned with the future direction or the future opportunities within that CBD master plan. So there's, there's a number of traffic and transport outcomes that have come through from the draft traffic report that we've received so far. The reason for the date, I believe, is largely associated with a flood study, which is for Black Creek. And that flood study will help inform some of the, the planning outcomes or planning proposals that would be identified or actions identified in the master plan. Hence the reason for the 2025 date. Our teams are reviewing that, that traffic and transport strategy as it stands. But there won't be any recommendations for major uplift or major changes to the, the, the traffic generation or that, that road network until we get through to the back end of that master plan.
So 2026, so my norm means not till September 2026, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Your NOM from last month?
Yeah, so my NOM was to get rid of the shared zone and put the zebra crossings back in to make it safer. Is, is that what you're saying? That it won't get done till twenty, September twenty twenty six?
Yeah, they're two different things.
Yeah, I know they're two different things, but the way you sort of said it, it just sounds like, well, until we get the CBD plan, then then, then we'll look at doing that. Is that?
So there was a resolution put up to council last year that recommended a change to the traffic arrangements, if you recall, and that wasn't voted on by council. So that, that request that, or not the information in the NOM that you provided last month is largely the same as what that previous recommendation was. So we, we don't have a way forward with that with respect to making those changes. So we're leveraging a more holistic approach, which is around those changes associated with improvements in the CBD.
I'm sorry, like that just sounds like my NOM just meant nothing. Is, is that what?
General Manager?
I'll, I'll come back to all the councillors separately and I'll, so the issue on the NOM was we needed to go back through because there was research that you'd asked to be done in relation to that. The broader CBD master plan, which will have other traffic changes or suggested changes in relation to movement, personal people movement, pedestrian movements. That will be delayed because of the, mostly because of the flood study timeframes. We'll come back to you separately in relation to your NOM. They're not tied to the two things, so we're not putting your NOM off until September twenty sixth. Just make that clear. But I'll come back with a formal response to councillors through a memo.
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure, because I mean, this has been a long time coming, this intersection, like, I mean, this is my fourth year on council and I think I've brought it up a million times about this intersection, how it's not safe with the fact that Charlton Street is ten kilometres and Cooper Street's forty. Nobody understands that. Nobody gives way in Cooper Street, yet they want to run you over in Charlton Street. We also have the boulevards on pavers that, you know, we had already a purple Ford go through and nearly actually take out residents. And then we also have the fact that there was a resident who fell over in Cooper Street and luckily had someone with them and was able to pull him off the road because otherwise they would have got run over and that still hasn't been fixed. And I've sent that through to council. I know this resident sent it through a few times and it's still not been addressed. So I just wanted to really alliterate that this intersection is extremely important to me and I do not want to hold off. I understand what you're saying now, but it's quite important to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Judd. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I, I just checked through the completed and ongoing items and I was looking for some, any additional information in regards to a motion that I believe councillor Palmski moved in regards to a meeting with federal and state members regarding homelessness. And I just wanted to know whether there was any ongoing sort of consistent communication with those members and council in the same way that we were able to set up to sort of quarterly policing meetings and if you had any information on that front?
Yeah, thank you councillor Hill. I can definitely answer that. So that's something I'm actively pursuing. So sometimes it's making the planets align and it can be a really hard situation just with everyone's challenging schedules. I have been in contact with Clayton Bar about this and also Dan Ripa Coley and have definitely been actively following it up. I've had a recent discussion too with councillor Palmski about this as it was her motion of urgency to instigate the conversation. The last conversation I had with Clayton and Dan were basically surrounding, looking to, to start a forum. An invite only forum with providers to try and get more providers in to the area, but that would involve all councillors as well. The, the motion of urgency, I wasn't expecting it to be arranged as quickly as what it was. I would have loved to have had all councillors involved. I think the timing, again, going back to the whole, the cataclysm of the clashing diaries and availability meant that we had to strike while the iron was hot. So all the EAs were working hard behind the scenes to try and make that work. But yeah, the conversation is ongoing. Just to, to that point with regards to the police meetings that will kick off again in October. Again, it comes down to, to diaries, it comes down to availabilities and that's, but yes, we're still pursuing that. So just want to confirm that. Yes. Any further questions? Now put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Moving on to report CC sixty two slash twenty twenty five. It's the public exhibition, the revised code of meeting practice. Can I have someone to move? Councillor Lee, seconding councillor Grine. Discussion. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Just briefly, that I think it's worthwhile making the community aware that we're putting this back out and the reasoning why it's going out on public exhibition because we would have adopted a code of meeting practice for this term of council after the recent election. This is coming forward due to revisions of the model code of meeting practice put out by the Office of Local Government and initiative undertaken by our current local government minister, Ron Honig, and some of these changes, I think, have some merit and some of these changes, I think a number of councillors in the room will perhaps disagree with. One of the key ones I'll just bring up briefly, which I think is reasonably relevant because we have two, two of our councillors joining us via audio visual link this evening. There's changes within the model code that is looking to restrict the the possibility for councillors to join via audio visual link because of particular reasons. Currently, it's reasonably loose as long as council agrees by resolution to whether our councillors will attend virtually, which which is what we've been able to do tonight for councillor Madden and councillor Harrington. But into this new model code, it sort of tightens the reins a little bit. And while any submissions that we receive from the public on the sections of the code, the model code which is being provided by the Office of Local Government, we're going to be very limited in what we can, any changes that can be made to it as we're required to adopt what's in the model code that's been provided to us. I think it's worthwhile for us to hear from our community about their thoughts. In the previous term, I spoke a little in different, at different times about our eagerness to try to attract sort of the widest range of individuals to to being a part of council and putting their hand up to run for council. And, and when you can provide ways for people to do that, no matter what their lifestyle or situation in life is, I think it's a great benefit to our community. It really we've seen in this term of council perhaps a sort of a younger group of councillors, a lot of councillors working full-time employment and which is fantastic to see. But when, when things like this model code that's been put forward by the Office of Local Government really starts to restrict the ways in which councillors can participate in meetings, I think that's a real detriment to sort of the future representation on council. And so I'll be putting in sort of my thoughts as a councillor to it. And I hope that anyone else that has a look at it and thinks they, they have some thoughts, put forward their submissions as well.
Councillor Judd?
I've just got a quick question, oh, I've got a couple of quick questions, but I'll ask the one that councillor Hill just made me think of before I forget it. If, if us as council, councillors, put in a submission against this, if this comes back to council, would you be able to vote on it?
You have to declare.
I'll come back to my notice on that because it's a code of meeting practice endorsed under a model. I, I would suggest perhaps not, but I'll need to confirm that, come back to you.
Councillor Hill?
Use the right wording that I said I provide some feedback. I'll probably just be putting through an email from my council email address to query staff on what it is and how things, certain things will operate in this, with this current proposal. If I wanted to put in submission, say as a member of the public, we spoke about this a little bit previously with another item at council in regards to the way in which conflicts arise, as to putting in a submission as an individual or sort of, you know, writing a query to staff about it. Yeah, sort of wearing your hat as a councillor, making an inquiry about how something will operate. That's what I'll be doing as a councillor, to express my thoughts on it. But, you know, I encourage members of the community to put their own submit.
Okay, just get some commentary from the director.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that clarification, councillor Hill. Certainly that's what I was going to recommend that, a bit like the operational plan we've put it out. We do ask councillors to give us feedback on those, those documents and it gets a little bit murkier when you're talking about in the development world, but certainly in this emails into us, questions and the like, we'll treat those as the internal community, not so much as, as a submission.
Councillor Judd, you have another question?
So, so my understanding that prior to COVID, nobody actually had visual link, is that correct? I just wanted to check for council meetings.
For the director?
Thank you. Yes, certainly the advent of COVID and the impacts that it had probably advanced us a little bit in relation to our use of technology. But prior to that, a councillor had to be physically in attendance to be able to participate in a meeting. That was certainly very relaxed during the COVID period. The model codes thereafter probably recognised what a great advancement it was in, you know, for those unforeseen circumstances in, in the main and allow the councils to be involved in the decision-making process. So certainly prior to COVID, the answer was you had to be.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I had that conversation previously with another councillor and I just, I just wanted to double check that I wasn't given any wrong information, saying that I'm pretty sure it was prior to COVID, they didn't have it. And I thought that that might be why it's actually in this revised from the state. Next question. Prior to this code of meeting practice, was there a dress code in there? I just seen something about dress code and it didn't really elaborate on, on that. And I was curious as to what that meant.
Put that through to director.
Thank you. I'd have to take it when I notice. I can't recall exactly the item in there, but essentially it is, you know, the emphasis would be on a council law to present in an appropriate format. I know a number of years ago, other councils around the region in some of their broadcast meetings, some of the attire and the like was less than satisfactory. So we've always been quite strong on that. But when it came into the code of meeting practice, I'd have to take on notice.
Yeah, thank you. I just seen it and I was just like, it didn't elaborate. So I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judd. So just to clarify, you're not asking us to wear top hats? Okay, just a week. Yes, councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Just like to go on record, so it is very disappointing that the Minister for Local Government would make the changes he has in section five in this code of meeting practice. We're only one year into a four-year term of council. Council accepted their positions knowing that if work took them away from the LGA and they could still be active during a council meeting via an audio visual link. But then to change a document that could affect the livelihoods of many councillors that are with us today across the state just doesn't make sense. This code should have been pushed, published, sorry, before the council elections or at the end of the current council term, the current term of council. So therefore I can't support the changes, but obviously I'm likely to have zero choice to accept it. We, we need to keep in mind that these changes can possibly cost council several hundreds of thousands of dollars in potential by-elections across the state, not only in Cessnock, but I think it's just a silly decision made and obviously there's, we haven't got much choice. I like the changes that we've got in our, the, the model that we're, we're putting out on exhibition, but I just don't think it should have been done at this particular time in the council term. That's all. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you councillor Madden. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak on the positive side for me personally about this a little bit. I know there is a few things that like Chris Madden, councillor Madden, just said that I don't quite agree with. But on the positive side, I think the main intention behind the change of the meeting practice was more transparency in local government, which I'm very happy there is finally a Labour minister that is willing to, you know, just get in there and get it done. I'm sure it's not perfect. It probably won't be perfect for a while. But I'm glad someone's actually finally trying to address transparency and hopefully out of that will come more accountability in local government. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Just a comment for the public, there is mandatory and non-mandatory provisions. So, yeah, as mentioned tonight, some of the things touched on are actually mandatory. When you are making those submissions, just keep that in mind. We'll now put that forward for a vote. All in favour? It's councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, Judd, King, Lee, Mason, Palmski, Pascoe, Hawkins, Harrington, Watten. Those against? Councillor Madden? That's carried. Now moving on to WI nine slash twenty twenty five, it's the draft waste management policy. Can I have someone to please move that? Councillor Grine seconded, councillor Dixon. Any discussion? Councillor King?
I just have a question in regards to bulk waste. I didn't pick up anything in the strategy about bulk waste. Do we have a estimated time of looking into that? I don't know if it's being investigated where is there a bit of an update or something about where we are with that?
Through to the director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor King. You're referring to the strategy, not the policy, which is up for to be brought on exhibition. That's okay. But just, it is mentioned in the strategy we have, we are investigating. We had, I think, back at the time, we had an approximate two-year timeframe, which twelve months of that is around getting data and information, reviewing our, our existing practices and then implementing a recommendation to council. The second part of that is the, the twelve months term beyond that is, is the contract process about implementing a contract process should we get in that pathway.
Okay, thank you for answering anyway.
Councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, I love the fact that this is going to help the tenants out there. We do have a massive problem with people doing illegal dumping, so I'm hoping that that might curb that issue. I do have a couple of questions though about the opt-in and opt-out, but I think I might email the director about it because I'm, I'm pretty sure is or on to getting a system in place for, for that. And I think it might be an opportunity to have a conversation if we're not in a meeting because I don't think it's quite relevant just yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judd. Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I apologize for being very quiet tonight. I have a bit of a case of laryngitis. But look, I do have a question, but councillor King covered what I was going to ask. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harrington. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I just wanted to make note for, for the public and for anyone watching along online that in the report, it, it notes that we will have three community drop-in sessions for people to give feedback for this policy and a frequent attendee of especially the waste teams, local drop-in sessions. It's great fun to see them cart the, the little bins out and have their little setup in front of shopping centres around town. But the, there is one current date listed in the report for the ninth of October at Cessnock Village Plaza between ten thirty and twelve PM. And I understand council will be advertising dates and times for location drop-ins at Curry-Curry Library and at the Huntley Shopping Centre. I encourage people to go along. You always get really fantastic information from our comms team and our waste team there at the drop-in sessions. And it's a great way to, if you're not very savvy online, to sort of put in a submission. You can always speak to the staff there and get an answer from them on the spot.
Thank you councillor Hill. Any further discussion? No further debate? We'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Now moving on to report WI ten slash twenty twenty five, it's the naming of the new Nepal facility at Booth Park Curry. Can I have someone to move that? Councillor Hill, seconding councillor Grine. Speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you again, Mayor Watten. Yeah, I'm a bit too harsh on the microphone myself tonight. Just wanted to speak briefly on this report and express thanks to the members of the community who put in submissions. The initial request coming from the Curry-Curry Nepal Association requesting that council look to name the new Nepal facility at currently Booth Park to the Molly Worthington Nepal facility was fully endorsed by almost all the submissions put in by the public and no other alternatives were sort of put forward. I think it's a great legacy to continue with the new Nepal court facility. I think it's a great legacy to continue with the new Nepal Court Facility. I try to drive past every now and then and see the works coming along really well and I think it's really positive to see some, some great community submissions put in and for us to follow along with the requests that have come in to keep that name for the new site.
Thank you councillor Hill, councillor Lee?
Thank you Mayor, I guess just to echo what councillor Hill has just said, I had the chance on Monday this week to sit down with a committee member of the Nepal Club and I asked him one simple question, I said, tell me about Molly Worthington and what it means to the club. We spoke at some length about the importance that she played in that club and how well-respected that legacy is, so as the submissions reflected, I really can't think of a better name for this facility.
Thank you councillor Lee, just to confirm to the community that we don't have two times Molly Worthington Parks, there's only going to be the one, if, should this go through and be resolved with council tonight, there has been a bit of confusion out there in the community. Any further discussion? No further discussion, we now put it forward for a vote. It's unanimous. Now moving on to business which written notice has been given, report B N twelve slash twenty twenty-five, the management and use of the land known as Brankston RV Camp. Can I, let's get someone to move councillor Lee, seconded, councillor King, speaking councillor Lee?
Thank you Mayor, moving this notice of motion tonight, I believe it's a low-risk way to turn a perennial debate into hopefully a structured piece of work that, you know, can actually help Brankston and the surrounding areas of, you know, Greeter and Huntley that's ever-expanding. A motion comes off the back of councillor Mason and I meeting with a group of locals and also the Caravan and Motor Home Club of Ashroy, C M C A, which council engaged in conversation with them, I think it might have been two thousand and eighteen, I think we worked out, somewhere around there, and there was economic studies done as well as to the benefit that it may bring to the township. This isn't about, you know, let's lock anything in place, it's simply about let's open engagement and have a conversation. I do note in the agenda that the director's commentary or the staff commentary was around the fact that they'd started having some conversations again with C M C A earlier this month, after I'd submitted the notice of motion, which is fantastic, and if it leads to something greater across the LGA, that's great, but I think I still want to leave, move the recommendation or the notice of motion that I put forward there, as it is to make sure that we are focusing on that part of land at Brankston as well. And it's very important as well to make sure we're talking to neighbouring residents and any businesses around while we're having those discussions. So I think I've reached out to all councillors about this one, whether it was via email, phone call or face to face, so hopefully they'll have some support here this evening.
Thank you councillor Lee, councillor Jerod?
I just got a quick question. The director's commentary sort of kind of answers it, but I want to make sure, this originally, is this the same site that actually come to council last term of council about a camp event? It is the same site. What makes a difference to this as a motion to why it didn't get passed last time? Because I was all for it before, I just wanted to know if anything has changed and whatnot.
Put it through to the general manager?
Thank you councillor Jerod, through you Mr Mayor. In broader context of the constraints that apply to the application, the DA that was lodged for this particular site, I understand some of the discussions more recently have talked about potential to resolve an access issue. The other elements in relation to the flooding and those matters still are there, so the site is heavily constrained in that respect. Notwithstanding the resolution that council might move under councillor Lee's, we'll explore other opportunities if they present with the C M C A anyway, because it may be that this isn't necessarily the right site, notwithstanding council's intention to try to do that. So we'll be open in our discussions with them, but those constraints still do exist on at Brankston.
Fair enough, well, I mean, I think, wasn't it said earlier, if we paid attention to flooding, we'd get nothing done in this area? Is that right? Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Lee, if you speak, you'll be wrapping up the debate, so I just want to leave it at that, is there any further discussion before councillor Lee wraps up debate? Just double checking, no one online, councillor Lee?
Just to touch on what you raised, all valid points, and councillor Mason and I sat down and it's why it's in there that we speak to neighbouring residents. There's been a potential solution around, particularly around Fireworks, that's been put forward by residents, so I won't go into further detail in this meeting about that, respecting their privacy, but we believe there's some room there to negotiate with them that may help this out, so.
Okay, thank you councillor Lee, we'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Now moving on to council reports, I've got one mention from yourself councillor King. Yep, councillor King?
Thank you Mr Mayor, on a bit more of a positive note for myself, on Thursday the eleventh of September, despite the rainy weather, I attended the food bank fresh food pop-up held in Curry Curry and delivered by Job Link Plus. From my best judgment, around six and a half tonnes of fresh fruit and vegetables were made available, free of charge to the members of our community. It was a bittersweet experience though, on one hand, I'm very grateful to Job Link Plus for bringing such a generosity to our community and it was heartening to see a strong turnout of people taking advantage of the opportunity. On the other hand, it's also a sobering reminder of how tough times currently are for many local families in our community. But I do wish to sincerely thank everyone who played a part in organising and delivering this initiative, their efforts made a real difference to those in need and demonstrated the strength of compassion and support within our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King, I was fortunate enough to pop out there quickly in between events and just want to again thank Job Link Plus for bringing this, it was my understanding after liaising with Job Link Plus, there was quite a substantial cost that they had to pay out, it wasn't just a charitable event based on free fruit and veg, so really, really want to thank them. I don't think I got it a hundred percent right when I posted in a little thing on Facebook just to spread the word, so I will highlight that here in person at this meeting. And also want to thank you too councillor King, you pushed this, it was broached and you pushed that, but also want to thank council staff for making this work out there in Curry. It was a great turnout, it's quite bittersweet and I think it also highlights how compassionate our council is, following from councillor Palmowski's motion of urgency, for example, with the rise of homelessness, yourself pushing this behind the scenes and seeing as results that epitomises civic leadership to me, so very proud to be part of this council that is actively engaging on that level. Any further reports from other councillors? No? From my side of things, some highlights there, chalked it down a little bit. If there's any questions about any of these, please let me know. I just want to highlight a couple of things, on the twenty-seventh of August, we had the first meet the mayor events at Woolenby, it was a really good turnout and again, I want to thank the council staff for helping make that happen and Myrtle and Stone Cafe as well, great venue, love to get in out there in Woolenby, it's a fantastic community, but, you know, we had the general manager fly through on his bike to get some scenery of the new things out of Buckety, it was just a great community event, so looking forward to seeing more of them occur, it was very well received. Stomp was back and again, I want to thank council staff for making that happen, that was something that, you know, council took up, made it happen, it was, okay, it was out of season, it wasn't, you know, directly in the usual Stomp season as it typically is in April, but it was a great community event nonetheless, very, very well done. The fifth of September, the Jenny Atchison MP, excuse me, meeting with the mayor and councillors, I thought that was productive. It's, I want to thank Jenny Atchison too for making the time to come through, it's a busy schedule, I'd say it's my job on steroids times two and the fact that she came and spent that time out here in Cessnock to talk about local matters that matter to our community, I think is fantastic and it was a great dialogue, a great conversation with all councillors and our director of works too, that was there and representatives from Transport for New South Wales, won't ask a question about Brankston Green to cycle away now, I'll ask it later, and the citizenship ceremony today, which probably while I've been blundering a little bit over a few things, it was big, there was fifty-five new citizens from all reaches of the globe, it was fantastic. Also want to thank Dan Ripocoli MP for coming along and councillor Hill, we also had councillor Pascoe and councillor Mason attend as well and I just want to give a very special mention, I'm going to embarrass her the next one, but I really want to thank, I don't know if I can actually name her, but my E A, E A, not A E, E A, she did a fantastic job, she puts everything together behind the scenes, I show up, I put on a robe, put on a bit of bling and do the ceremony, but she's the one making it happen behind the scenes, so thank you very much to her, she did a fantastic job. Well, with that being said, we'll now close the meeting at eight fifty-one, thank you.